Get into it. Should we get into it? Here. All right. Excellent. Excellent. Okay, so again, thank you so much for having me. It's my honor and my pleasure to be here emceeing tonight. My name is Joy LaFleur. I'm a spoken word poet amongst many other things. And I'm Laurel's friend. And so it's really exciting for me to be here in support of her tonight. Not only because I love her as a friend, but because like all of you, I think she will be an incredible addition to the 4J School Board. I do not have children. I however, get to work with youth as a teaching artist. I get to teach spoken word poetry in a variety of settings and I tend to work with students that are experiencing incarceration, are considered at risk in some way, or are underserved in other areas. And those are my favorite folks to hang out with. And I know that there's just so much structure involved in getting kids the resources they need. And I just cannot think of a better person to do that, be a piece of that work. All the pieces are needed. So I'm just as thrilled to be here as everyone else. And because I'm a sayer of stuff and an emcee of events, uh, this is my role for tonight. So let me give you a little bit of a rundown of what's going to happen, just so we kind of all have our expectations managed. We do plan to end very firmly at 6:30. So we are going to have a beautiful, we have a beautiful lineup of speakers. We're going to get to hear from a bunch of fine folks. We're going to get to hear from Laurel herself. Before we hear from Laurel, I'm going to make a short poetic offering. Kind of fits the campaign's spirit. She asked me to find a poem. And so I'm excited to contribute that. So we'll get to hear from our speakers. We'll get to hear from the woman of the hour. And then we will open it up to take some questions directly for Laurel. So again, if you have a question, please type question for Laurel, throw it in the chat, and we'll be gathering those throughout the evening. Nate, okay. So I, I also just wanted to make a suggestion. I know we may, some of us may be way more experienced than we wish we were with Zoom. And for other folks, it might be a newer experience. So there are different ways that you can view your screen. So up in the top right hand corner, you have the little icon that says view. And you have the options of speaker view and gallery view. And because we're about to go into a time of speakers, I just might recommend, like how I usually choose to enjoy that, is to go to the speaker view, because that means I'm just seeing the person who is talking, rather than this whole Hollywood Squares Brady Bunch thing that's happening, but of course, up to you. So yeah, speaker view is, is the, yeah, that's my, my lane of choice. So I want to go ahead and welcome our first speaker tonight. Sabrina Gordon is an elementary teacher in 4J and current president of Eugene Education Association, representing the licensed staff in both 4J and the Bethel School Districts. So Sabrina is going to kick it off for us tonight. I know we can't make sound together, but if you are making the choice to be visual, maybe let's go ahead and give Sabrina a little, let's do a little visual, still a visual snap and clap. Yes. Welcome Sabrina.
That was super fun. Thank you, Jora. I was a little bit surprised that I'm first. I didn't actually know that I was going first. But I so appreciate your energy. So thanks for kicking things off at the end of a long day by like energizing us. That's super awesome. Welcome, everybody. Yes, my name is Sabrina Gordon. I'm president of Eugene Education Association. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who's here this evening to celebrate and support Laurel's campaign for 4J School Board. Eugene Education Association is the union representing licensed educators in both the 4J and the Bethel Districts. We are teachers, librarians, nurses, special education teachers, consultants, and other specialists. And we are excited about Laurel's candidacy for school board, because we believe Laurel will bring a voice for students and families that has not been there before. Laurel is a graduate of the 4J school system. And as a person of color, has experiences and perspectives that are critical to the decisions that impact our students today. Laurel is a parent of 4J graduates and current 4J students. And as a parent, Laurel has also navigated the special education system in 4J. She has firsthand experience in what it takes to be a parent advocate. From the challenges of understanding a very complicated process, to being part of a team making instructional decisions, and sometimes encountering obstacles that leave a parent feeling like they're not really part of the team, or questioning whether the system is doing enough to meet the needs of their child. It is in challenging and difficult experiences like these that opportunities lie. Laurel is not afraid to lean into a challenge and knows how to stay in until students get what they need. She knows that in order for students to get what they need, educators and parents must work together. Through her experiences, she has learned to recognize that sometimes the solution is additional resources. And other times, the solution is more about clearing away obstacles so the educators can get the job done. The educators of EEA are excited to have Laurel on the 4J School Board, because we know she can be a bridge between parents, educators, and the district. She knows how important it is for educators who work with students every day to have direct lines of communication with decision makers, including the school board. And educators recognize that we have a lot to learn from the parents of our students. In so many ways, Laurel's voice on the 4J Board will be, will bridge the gap between challenges and opportunities without relying on assumptions. Having a school board member who brings the perspectives and experiences of a 4J student of color, a parent of 4J students of color, a parent navigating 4J special education system, and an energetic community activist willing to lean in and stick with critical conversations is sure to bring positive changes for our students. Thank you Laurel for stepping up to run for the 4J School Board.
Yes. I give extra enthusiasm. I can feel it coming through everyone's screens. Thank you. This is such an interesting experience, isn't it? But I love, I love that we can still harness this enthusiasm and feel each other in community together. Thank you so much, Sabrina. I, yeah, all of that, and she's an amazing dancer. I don't know if y'all know, Laurel is very fun to go dance with. Just drop in a few, a few little lesser, lesser known aspects that may or may not come to fruition in a school board meeting. Okay, next speaker, I'm, I'm so pleased to welcome a youth voice into the room. Our next speaker is Iliana Barnes Diaz, a student leader in her senior year at South Eugene High School. She's currently applying her leadership skills as an intern on Maya Robassa's campaign for 4J School Board. Nate, uh, welcome, welcome, Iliana.
I want to see our daughter.
Hi, um, so I'm Iliana. Can everyone hear me? I just can't tell if, okay. I am a, a senior at South Eugene High School. And I honestly have been doing a lot of reflecting kind of back on my high school experience and what was really great. And the thing that comes to mind, or like the thing that stands out the most that was really, really great about my high school experience was getting to be a part of the Career and Technical Education, or CTE program, or one of them at my school. And it, um, I did this like intro to education. You like learn about child development and education. And it's kind of like an intro course to see if you would even be interested in pursuing something in education later in your life. And it was so interesting, but not just interesting, like the thing that kept me the most consistently motivated and excited to go to school. And especially during this like really weird year, kept me like consistently motivated every day to, to go to class. And, um, as amazing and wonderful as that experience has been, and, and all the classes that I took up, took leading up to the CT class that was part of the same program has been, I know that, I know that CT could be better than what it is right now. And a couple of those ways that I'm thinking that they could be better are like, in terms of like access to CTE, if you don't go to a school that has the CT program you want, you don't get to be a part of that CT program. So there's kind of a, a question of like equity with that, where like, if you are, you know, at South, but you want to take a woodworking or shop class, you can't, or like, you know, it goes all the different ways, whatever school you're at, because there is different CTE programs and different amounts of CT programs offered at like every 4J school. And another way that it could be better is definitely, I feel like CTE is not just like a class, but an amazing opportunity. And it's not always presented like that. Like I wasn't talked to that much about CTE. And it wasn't emphasized that much as like a really amazing, awesome opportunity to get to check out something that's going to give you real life skills and prepare you a little bit more for your next step. And so that's like another way, I guess I see that it can be better. And, um, that is why I'm so, so excited about Laurel's campaign and that Laurel's running, because she has made it a priority on her campaign and like to, um, to work on CT and to make it even better. And I think that that is so, so valuable to students. And so that is why I'm so, so excited to, um, to be here and that Laurel's running and just to give my support to Laurel. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Iliana, for sharing your very direct experience and for having the bravery to come and be one of the speakers in this meeting. Extra, extra, extra exciting. Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm used to hosting big shows, so I just was ready to hype woman, everyone. And I will try to keep my commentary limited despite my puppy-like enthusiasm for each one of you, so that we move along. Going to welcome our next, our next speaker, Linda Hamilton. Linda was born and raised in Louisiana by a Black and Cherokee Indian mother and a French Creole Haitian father. Linda thrives on serving community and working towards eliminating practices of racism and racial discrimination, and has an impressive resume of community involvement. She currently serves on the Lane Education Service District Board, UVO President's Diversity Advisory, Advisory Community Council, and the Oregon School Board Association Board of Directors. She is co-founder of Oregon Black Education Foundation and current president for Blacks in Government. Linda's was recently recognized as one of Eugene Weekly's Happening People and awarded the 2021 City of Eugene Human Rights Commission MLK Community Leadership Award. Please welcome Linda Hamilton.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Thank you all for coming out this evening to support Laurel. I hope you're all are here to support her since you're on this call. I'm here to join you all in action to support Laurel. I've known Laurel for some time now. And what I do know her, about her, is that she's a compassionate server. And we need that service. Being elected for the 16th School District, what I do know is we lack diversity, equity, and inclusion on our board. I am now the African American currently serving on the school board here. And we are hoping to have Holly Johnson and Laurel serving on the school board. So today we're here for Laurel. What I can say about her is that she's not a voice of silence, which we don't need on the board. She's a voice of compassion for all students. She will speak up for all students. She's a parent perspective that she can bring to the board, as well as her heart and compassion for homeless youth, students, mental health, helping families that are affected by the school district in a positive way and a negative way. She can help those parents who are affected, being the parent of five herself. Laurel will definitely bring that voice to the 4J School Board. Laurel will also bring the voice of, I'm not going to say a person of color, because she is a person of color. She will bring a voice for the Black families and students and, and Black representation on the board, which is what we lack as well. Uh, I'm going to hope everyone on the board have the perspective of being a, of what it's like to be a parent, but also what it's like to be a parent of color or a parent without a voice. And those that are on the board is, is there for both, to be a parent when, when they have to be a parent, but to be a voice for all. And we need that voice for all. Laurel can provide that voice for all. Well, she definitely, definitely, definitely will bring that voice for all. I ask that you guys join me in, in voting for Laurel to be a seat at the table, representing Black students, Black parents, and the young that, representing all students, who is not as advantaged as others, and some that lack the advantage of active voice. Then she will be there to speak up and be that person to have a voice when they feel like they can't have a voice, that they can count on Laurel, because she will be there with that voice. Again, help support Laurel. Please support Laurel. Join in supporting Laurel. Vote in supporting Laurel. And see that Laurel fills a seat at the 4J School Board.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Linda. Oh, my gosh. What a, what a, yes, I, I, what a, um, I know if we were all in a room together, that the waves of sound that would come back at you would be enormous. I know that's one of the things we, we lack in here. And I love that feeling of, of power that still, when someone uses their voice powerfully, especially when they're speaking about using their voice, and we all feel it. And I can just, I can sense that we are, we're building together. Thank you very much, everyone who is participating. Thank you, Linda. I noticed in the chat that someone was mentioning they needed to leave early, and then someone else went ahead and threw the donation link in there, so I just wanted to call attention to that. So if anyone does need to leave early, or is wanting to go ahead and make their donation right now, please. There is the info. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Okay. So, um, our, our last speaker, before we get to hear from Laurel herself, I'll drop a little poem beforehand. But our last speaker, uh, for this first section, we are going to hear from our former mayor Kitty Piercy, who has been a teacher, an activist on women's rights, an Oregon state representative, a Planned Parenthood VP, and served as mayor of Eugene for 12 years. She is also Laurel Rourke's campaign chairperson. Please welcome Kitty Piercy.
Thank you. So you can hear me, right? Yep. Laurel, I'm so glad to be here and I'm so proud of you for doing this. I should tell the rest of you that I met Laurel through our service on Square One Village's board. And when I met her and heard her voice for the first time, I said to myself, that's the voice. That's a voice of clarity. That's a voice of intelligence. That's a voice that people can listen to, and she can pay, play an important role in our community. So when the role of needing a new school board member came up, and I was asked for suggestions, I suggested Laurel, because I thought she could bring what's needed to the board. And I'll go back into my own parental experience. My middle son is Micronesian. So I have a kid of color who grew up in 4J. And I vividly remember, and I don't think things have changed that much. My white son was told he was too smart to go to certain schools. And my child of color was told he was too dumb to go to certain schools. So that was my, and my husband worked for the school district and was deputy superintendent. So this is a big fat issue to me. I not only believe that we need to approach equity, inclusion differently, to offer every child in this district, the ability to succeed and plan a life in the future is not us doing something good for the kid. It's that, it's what we're supposed to be doing for every single child, no matter who they are, no matter what they bring to the table. It doesn't matter. It's not being nice. It's what they deserve and are owed by our community. I also want to say that I think at one time, 4J prided itself on being known as a leader in this country. And in recent years, we have really thought average is fine. And I personally think that's, I want to say sucks, but that's not a very good language to use. But I want to say, I think that the people of this community have to learn how to take their passion and interest and distribute it fairly throughout the community, and engage everyone, and offer everyone's voice, and make sure that every single kid and family member, parent, teacher, all of us are engaged in being sure all our children get that opportunity for the future. There is no excuse for us to not be out there in front of this nation, leading this charge. We have very few people of color actually in our community. But we won't have more till we make sure this is a welcoming place for every family, for every child, and that every family of color in this community can know that if they come here, they are welcome. We embrace them and they acknowledge that they belong and are part of us and have just as much to say about the future of this community as anyone. As you see, I get a little fired up about this, but it's so important. And that's why I, Laurel leans in and I lean into Laurel, because I think these voices have not been at the table. Good voices, people who care have been at the table. I'm not contesting that. I just think you haven't heard from the voices who have had the experience, who really understand what it feels like to be on the other end of those IEP conversations, what it feels like to feel your kid is always going to be treated differently than anybody else. So I am vociferously in favor of bringing people on our board who can be sure that every person in our community, and every teacher in our community, and every parent in our community has a voice in what we do. And what we do will make our kids have the best future ever. So go Laurel.
Thank you, Kitty. I feel like if there was like a Zoom reaction that just meant preach, like we all would have been pushing that button. As I saw River throw in the chat, I lean into, Laurel leans in and I lean into Laurel. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, uh, as a, as a setup to introducing Laurel herself, she asked me to, I, what I do, and I'm, I am largely a spoken word poet. And she asked me if I could find a, a poem that would sort of speak to some of the things that I know she's passionate about inside of this campaign and who she is as a person. So I'm going to share a poem with you, and I want to, um, this is a, a poem that only came into being a few years ago. So this is an, an old famous poem. I would say it is a modern masterpiece. Some of you may have seen it. I want to make very sure that the author of the poem is seen and credited. So I am going to, uh, share my screen with you as soon as, uh, Michael gives me the permission to do so, or whoever's hosting gives me a little bit of permission. But I'll go ahead and tell you that, uh, this is a piece called Lift Off. It was written by a younger poet named Donovan Livingston. It went viral as a piece and, oh, thank you. I'm now the host. Look at y'all have so much power. So Donovan Livingston gave an address in the form of a spoken word speech to his graduating class at Harvard. So he's an educator and a poet. And I am going to go ahead and share my screen, so you can see exactly who I am talking about here. We'll go into this mode. Thank you for your patience. Here we go. Here's Donovan. So, um, yeah, on May 25th, 2016, Mr. Livingston, a master's graduate from Harvard University, delivered a poetic address to the graduating class. And within seconds, it went on to become one of the most watched speeches by any student speaker. In his poem titled Lift Off, Livingston, who was speaking at the Harvard Graduate School of Education ceremony, addressed the issues of present day education, quotas, standardized assessments, and went on to emphasize the importance of a good teacher in a student's life and career. So the context for this poem is that he is becoming an educator, speaking to others, becoming educators. And, um, I really encourage you to go and look up the piece on its own, so you can hear him deliver it. Like most spoken word pieces, this is very rooted into the poet's own voice and own identity. So I am a really imperfect vehicle for delivering it. So that's why I wanted his face front and center. So we'll bring the words into this space. Um, and it's an honor to share his words. Just as an aside, I got to meet him in person, kind of when he was out and began touring with this work. I emcee'd an event and also shared some poetry, and I got to meet him in person. And I can verify that you see this person in incredibly shiny moment in their life. And sometimes you think, maybe that was just a shiny moment. Nope, he is that shiny. It was just incredible, brilliant, generous, warm. So, um, yeah, look him up and, and hear it from his own mouth. But here for now, just to bring this element into the space before we hear from Laurel, is Donovan's poem. This is a quote. "Education then, beyond all other devices of human origin, is a great equalizer of the conditions of men." Horace Mann, 1848. Donovan begins. "At the time of his remarks, I couldn't read. I couldn't write. Any attempt to do so punishable by death. For generations, we have known of knowledge's infinite power. Yet somehow, we've never questioned the keeper of the keys, the guardians of information. Unfortunately, I've seen more dividing and conquering in this order of operations, a heinous miscalculation of reality. For some, the only difference between a classroom and a plantation is time. How many times must we be made to feel like quotas, like tokens in coined phrases, diversity, inclusion? There are days I feel like one, like only, a lonely blossom in a briar patch of broken promises. But I've always been a thorn in the side of injustice. Disruptive, talkative, a distraction, with a passion that transcends the confines of my consciousness, beyond your curriculum, beyond your standards. I stand here, a manifestation of love and pain with veins pumping revolution. I am the strange fruit that grew too ripe for the poplar tree. I am a dream act, dream deferred incarnate. I am a movement, an amalgam of memories America would care to forget. My past alone won't allow me to sit still. So my body, like the mind, cannot be contained. As educators, rather than raising your voices over the rustling of our chains, take them off, uncuff us, unencumbered by the lumbering weight of poverty and privilege, policy and ignorance. I was in seventh grade when Ms. Parker told me, Donovan, we can put your excess energy to good use. And she introduced me to the sound of my own voice. She gave me a stage, a platform. She told me that our stories are ladders that make it easier for us to touch the stars. So climb and grab them. Keep climbing, grab them. Spill your emotions into the Big Dipper and pour out your soul. Light up the world with your luminous allure. To educate requires Galileo-like patience. Today, when I look my students in the eye, all I see is constellations. If you take the time to connect the dots, you can plot the true shape of their genius shining in their darkest hour. I look into each of my, I look each of my students in the eyes and see the same light that aligned Orion's Belt and the pyramids of Giza. I see the same twinkle that guided Harriet to freedom. I see them beneath their masks and mischief, exist an authentic frustration, an enslavement to your standardized assessments. At the core, none of us were meant to be common. We were born to be common, starting across space and time, leaving our mark as we crash into everything. A crater is a reminder that something amazing happened here, an indelible impact that shook up the world. Are we not astronomers looking for the next shooting star? I teach in hopes of turning content into rocket ships, tribulations into telescopes, so a child can see their potential from right where they stand. And injustice is telling them they are stars without acknowledging night that surrounds them. Injustice is telling them education is the key. While you continue to change the locks, education is no equalizer. Rather, it is the sleep that precedes the American dream. So wake up. Wake up. Wake up. Lift your voices until you've patched every hole in a child's broken sky. Wake up every child so they know of their celestial potential. I've been a black hole in the classroom for far too long, absorbing everything without allowing my light escape. But those days are done. I belong among the stars and so do you, and so do they. Together, we can inspire galaxies of greatness for generations to come. No, sky is not the limit. It is only the beginning. Lift off. Thank you Donovan, sending our energy out to this poet. I highly encourage you to follow him. He and his wife are two of the most beautiful people I've ever met. Not kidding. It was like meeting the young Obamas. They're brilliant. Yeah, go hear it from him. Okay. Stop in the share. Stop in the share. So yeah. Thank you Laurel for wanting poetry in the space. And, um, yeah. I know, I know we're all here for this woman, but I also want to give her a proper introduction. So, um, if you're just meeting Laurel, or maybe here's some things you didn't know about her yet. Laurel Warwick is a graduate of the Evergreen State College. Go gooey ducks. Sidebar, so am I. We didn't know each other then. Where she received a BA in sociology and urban and community studies. Her career has been dedicated to public service and for the last six months, she has worked with the Lane County Recovery Operations where she's leading the disaster case management program serving victims of the recent wildfires. She knows how to help local and state bureaucracies be more responsive to family needs. Laurel has been a proud member of AFSCME as a county employee, joining the picket line when called to. She knows the importance of organizing workers to ensure their voices are heard. This commitment to service extends beyond her professional life as Laurel serves as a volunteer board member for Carriett Forward and Square One Villages. She knows, yeah, she's woman's amazing. Again, I don't know when she sleeps, but I know she's the most capable person. She knows what makes for effective leadership in a board setting. She has five children, three that graduated from 4J schools and two that are currently in high schools in the district. Through her own children's experience, she has seen the system fail to accommodate the needs of kids that struggle with their education and believes strongly that all kids deserve to follow their dreams, regardless of their ability to thrive independently in that system. She is proud to be a native Eugenian who was also a student of the 4J system. And while she has many good memories as a student, she brings with her the lived experience of a system that polices and marginalizes Black and Brown students more often than others. Laurel has a deep and personal passion for equity with social justice and for elevated voices that struggle to be heard. With a campaign slogan of Voice for Working Parents, Success for Every Student, Laurel is excited to bring that passion to the 4J school board. And I am excited to welcome Laurel to the virtual mic.
Thank you, Jora. Thank you so much. Um, I would just like to, to start out to say, um, if everybody could check that they're muted because we are getting some noise. Anyway, but also things happen in a Zoom and so good fun. We're all live and we're get to feel all the fun of Zoom meetings. Thank you, everyone that is here and everyone that spoke. Oh, this is a humbling experience, but also so. I mean, we all love Eugene and we want great things and how beautiful to see everybody who shows up for it. So I get excited about stuff like that. So, um, first, um, thank you for joining my, I gotta move my words over here so I can see everything. Thank you for joining us as I officially kick off my campaign for 4J School Board. The words Jora, for generations, we have known of knowledge's infinite power. Yet somehow we've never questioned the keeper of the keys, the guardians of information. And it's so true. Those of you that know me know that my decision to run for the school board was not one that I took lightly. As a student at 4J, I have felt the sting of being watched too much, being told I was not smart. And this might sound strange, but that implicit bias is part of what made me who I am today. I took those microaggressions as my superpower. I am the voice that sees all marginalized students, staff, parents in this realm of which I'm going into. And I say something. I am a mom of five who have, who have attended 4J schools. I have firsthand knowledge on how important one's experience at school is to shaping a young person's future. Like Jora said, my campaign slogan is a voice for working parents, success for every student. I lead with working parents, uh, because I am one. I know firsthand how challenging it can be to have our concerns considered and our voices heard in the school system. I say every student because I'm concerned about marginalized students that struggle to excel in a system that narrowly defines success. It is worth noting that nearly one third of graduating students are not college bound. Many are entering adulthood unprepared financially for the responsibilities and challenges that await them. It is our responsibility to keep kids engaged in school. I believe that a robust career and technical education program that does not solely focus on moving young adults onto college, which is how it is now in many ways, but provides options for every student who would like to leave school with the ability to earn a living wage. It's so important. It is through my and my children's experience that I see the need for a different perspective at the table. I have seen my three children who have IEP struggle with their education and how the system fails to accommodate the needs of kids like mine. I've had to repeatedly advocate on behalf of my children for schools to follow the accommodations that are required by law. Because of the military, I have the unique position of working with five different school districts. I have never had to fight as hard for my children's education as I do at 4J. Parents, students and staff need their voices to be valued. I strongly believe that all kids deserve to follow their dreams. I'm going to say that again. I strongly believe that all kids deserve to follow their dreams, regardless of their ability to thrive independently in this current system. We still have a long way to go in 4J when it comes to policy and actions that uphold the values of diversity, equity and inclusion. It was encouraging to see past statements from superintendents and the board in support of Black Lives Matter. But it's also, it is also positive to see that the district has a strategic plan with a goal of equitable access and outcomes for every student. However, public statements and plans are only as good as how things are actually implemented on the ground. As a Black woman, I understand equity on a very personal level. Equity isn't just about how we speak it and value each other. Inequity is embedded into our systems. Because it is systematic, it must be addressed at policy and systems level. My academic career was centered on social justice issues. And my professional career has involved service to some of the most vulnerable and marginalized people in our community. These experiences are part of who I am and will be the foundation of how I approach my work on the board. When we hear marginalized voices, we learn why we are not achieving success for every student. There is a need for new voices that will advocate for those outside the mainstream that struggle to succeed in our schools. I believe in and support 4J School District. I also believe that I can play a role in elevating the district's work on educational equity. We can and must do better. I love this town. I'm from here. I have been on several boards. I get to see how much this town gives back. What? And that is one reason, as they talk about, as Black people expending our emotional energy and working on things, it does take emotional energy for us to, to be that voice all the time that stands up and says something. So when I choose to expend that energy, it's on things that I absolutely believe in. And I went to these schools and while I say, I know I was marginalized and policed and watched, that's not my entire experience. I remember learning how to swim in fourth grade. I remember Mrs. Bowers to this day from Condon School, who was my absolute most favorite teacher in the world because she loved me and I had no doubt. Sorry, I've been working long hours. I just want to say thank you so much for being here. You could probably tell I get a little passionate about what I believe, but I also bring others with me. I don't just say, hey, you, you're wrong, move along. I say, come with me. And this is why. Because we are, I absolutely believe, all very good people and we want good things. And we are a great place and I love Oregon and I love Eugene. I've lived around the world in different places and I came back home. So thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your support and, uh, I hope to be that voice on the school board. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna do my extra loud clapping for everybody. Claps are coming through. Oh, thank you. I love your heart. I'm allowed to say that because we're friends, but I know everybody's thinking it. I love your heart. Okay, our last, our last speaker as we move through the program. I want to welcome Lori Triger to our virtual stage. Lori is serving in her first term on the Board of Lane County Commissioners. She has two adult kiddos who both went to 4J schools and twin grandsons that are freshmen at Churchill. Lori has been an active community organizer, advocate, volunteer and nonprofit professional Eugene for more than 30 years. She's played a significant role in a number of social justice campaigns, including protecting abortion access, managing food security and anti-poverty programs, launching youth health initiatives and passing paid sick leave day laws in the city of Eugene and statewide. Slowly sipping coffee with her cat each morning is her favorite thing. But her second favorite thing is elevating women and helping them get into elected office at every level of government, up and down the ballot. Heck yes. Please welcome Lori Triger to the stage.
Thank you, Jora. Thank you so much. And thank you Laurel for including me, but mostly thank you for running. Thank you for putting yourself out there. Thank you for doing the vulnerable work that you're doing to get ready to serve kids and parents and the 4J School District and really our whole community. So real quick, before I get to what I came here to say in these last few minutes, I'm going to invite anyone who doesn't have their camera on. I get it. Not everybody can do it. You got your reasons, but if you can turn it on and share a little bit of that vulnerability, the way Laurel's been doing with us. And so she can kind of scroll through while I chat with y'all for a minute and see all your beautiful faces and your smiles and, and who's here. I'd really appreciate that. Thank you. As Jora mentioned, I was recently elected to the Lane County Board of Commissioners. I'm the first woman to hold the seat that I'm serving in, and I'm only the eighth woman in all of the history of Lane County to serve on the Board of County Commissioners. I know what it's like to be first. It's not easy. And I know what it's like to be a woman and run for office and that's not easy. But it's so important that we have the voice of more women at more tables. Women have to be asked about seven times more often to run before they will step up and put their names out there than men. And we are missing out on so much when we miss out on good women candidates. We are about 51% of the population overall, but only about a quarter of elected officials in this country. So when you talk about representation, we are a big missing voice in those policy positions. We bring lived experience. Laurel has shared with you her story as a mama, as a working parent. And so we know she brings incredibly valuable lived experience to this role. We also bring a particular work style, a more collaborative, solutions focused, and less, I'll just say it ego forward work style in these positions. And we need more of that. Particularly, we need Laurel to be there as not just a voice, but as eyes and ears for Black kids in 4J. She will see and hear and understand things that others will not, cannot, do not, and sometimes even when they do, don't know or aren't ready to do the right thing about it. So our kids need Laurel in 4J and on that board, but particularly our Black children in this community need her. Now, when Jora introduced me and I talked about getting women elected up and down the ballot, I mean it. We need women in every level of office and it's not necessarily a ladder. People don't necessarily start out at low level races and work their way up. It's important to find the right seat for you, for the kind of policy you want to work on, for the kind of issues you care about. But overall, no matter what, you're going to bring a value set. School boards are critically important and they're becoming the front line in protecting democracy in this country. We are seeing the infiltration on school boards of hard right wing, white supremacists, right to lifers, getting seats on these boards because other people aren't stepping up to run and it's an easy way. It's an easy way in. We need not only to keep those folks out, but we need to get people in like Laurel. People with heart, people who understand the issues parents and kiddos are facing. People who know how to navigate bureaucracy and what policy looks like when it's being implemented. We need people with compassion and what you just heard from Laurel, you know, she brings all that and more. She brings focus, clarity, creativity and connection to other parents and to issues in the community. Laurel is invested in our kids and now we need to invest in Laurel. So I'm here tonight to ask you to dig deep. As someone who recently ran for office and had to pivot my campaign in COVID, I know how hard it is to reach voters, period, full stop, but especially in this COVID environment. What a lot of folks who haven't worked on campaigns don't understand is money is simply energy in a campaign. Money is the way we connect with voters. Laurel has a website that costs money. Laurel has lawn signs. Those cost money. Laurel wants to send postcards and mailers out to voters so they know who she is and what she stands for, so they can mark their ballot. That costs money. And so all of us need to do our part. It's a very small part, but it's a critically important one that supports the huge part that Laurel has taken on, which is to run for office and to serve, because the serving is where it really gets, uh, gets tough, right? So we got to have her back and we got to dig deep. And I'm not going to tell you what that dollar amount is. For some of us, 10 bucks is digging real deep right now. For those of us that a hundred bucks is digging deep, please dig all the way to your hundred dollar debt. If you've got a $500 check going wanting, please make it out to Laurel and help her reach voters, share her message, her values and her experience, so they know who they're voting for and why. We got to help her get the word out. Voters deserve to hear what Laurel's going to bring to 4J and how she's going to serve our kids. There's a link in the chat. You can do it right now. You can hop online. Super easy to make a contribution. I think I haven't looked down there if there's a place to mail a check, if you prefer the good old fashioned, uh, write a check way of getting Laurel some money. But I cannot emphasize enough as, again, as someone who, who ran recently, how important it is when we're going to step up and invest in community that we know community is investing in us. So please give what you can, support Laurel. I'm going to kick it back to Jora who's going to talk about all the many other ways you can help her out and bring this wonderful event home. And the last thing I'll say is if you didn't know before this event that Laurel brings creativity along with the experience and the compassion, the commitment, now you do. Because this was, I don't know about y'all, I spent a lot of time on Zoom. This is way more fun than 97% of my other Zoom, uh, meetings that I have to hop on. So thank you for, for bringing that Laurel. Thank you everyone for coming and, uh, let's go win.
Thank you Lori. Thank you. Neat. So yes, I will, I'm just going to hop right into saying, since we are, uh, I know, who could have guessed it? We're, we're a little bit closer to the end of time than we thought we would be. So, uh, before we get into questions, I'm just going to go ahead and dovetail off what Lori said and, and, um, remind us all that there are lots of other ways to be in support. So hosting a yard sign, they're very attractive. I think they look great. I live in the country, so it doesn't mean much. I think they look great. I live in the country, so it doesn't mean much. Someone host one for me, host a yard sign, reposting social media messages. That's definitely one of those, you know, it's just such a way we're receiving information. So reposting stuff from the campaign, especially I think on personal, just really in that more personal way, talking to friends, the best, signing up as a campaign endorser. And so by going to her website, going to her Facebook, which I do believe are in the chat, you'll get access to those resources. I also have to say, I think the headshots that Laurel got for herself are gorgeous and I would have to, yeah, aren't they? They're amazing. And I found that reposting that picture and a little bit of her bio today. I don't know, I'm just throwing there, those out there is like, it's hard sometimes to get people to click the links. We want them to, to click. And one of the things I've found most effective is to actually just say, here's what I'm talking about. Yeah, I'm taking a picture, I'm, I'm with some text and then I'm going to point you to the link. Because then people actually like take a pause and, and look at it and they see it's more humanizing. Here's the person, here's the info. So I just screenshotted her lovely picture with her bio and then said, hey, go find more. So that's my personal recommendation for a little extra social media sharing there. And more than anything to vote on May 18th. Now, if we have a bit of a moment left and some questions that have come in, I don't know, I'm going to check in with our, with our campaign manager, Michael. How, where are we at with our, with our questions? I know we want to let people get out of here at the time we promise.
We don't have any questions in the chat, Jora, right now. So if folks have something that they'd like to ask Laurel, please throw something in the chat. And or if you just liked, if you're feeling inspired, you just want to share what's on your mind right now too, just raise your hand and, and we'll, we'll call on you.
I'm scanning faces.
I, I could use this time to talk, to say thank you. I know a lot of people have had to leave, but we have a lot of great people endorsing us. And, and would, would that be good?
Yeah, I'll just keep an eye out for hands. So folks raise a hand if you still want to talk and I'll, I'll call on.
Georgiana.
Matthew Yuke has his hand up.
Great, okay. Go ahead, Matthew. Matthew, did you have something you wanted to say?
Oh my gosh, I'm, I'm so sorry about that. I actually forgot to plug in my microphone, yes. Holy cow, holy cow, this thing is so exciting, like the speeches, the folks, the, I mean Laurel. Oh my gosh, I, I'm, this is the first time I've really seen her present stuff in person. I'm a big fan of Maya though. And so with that recommendation coming all along and together, it was just like, oh my gosh, okay. I definitely have to check this out, right? Along with Rose, I saw her post that donation link. Oh yeah, Rose. And yeah, I would just, um, sorry, I don't know how off this might be. I'm currently working on trying to help make sure bias crime or not crime, sorry, school board, bias, hate and discrimination instances get recorded, processed and have a codified like workflow almost that has meaningful resolution at the end of it. And if elected to school board, is that something that you would like to see have commentary on or thoughts?
I, yeah, I appreciate that, that's. One thing that I have liked that is that the university uses is a hate and bias response team when something happens. While I don't work at the university, so somebody else will have to tell me if that works well. I believe the idea behind it is beautiful because I know as a person who had, who has had to report, that is a very lonely, scary feeling. And having some team there that is part of your organization to take that information, let you know you're not alone and to help this move through the system is really important. I can't tell you that's going to happen at the 4J school board because you know, we have to work all together to figure this out. But it is one of the things I'm excited about that is happening in our town. And we do know places that it is being used and we can look at that formula and see if we need to make it better. Or as a starting place, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can get, use that to say, you know, if something happens, that you are taking somebody who's already vulnerable as a marginalized person and making them immensely more vulnerable if you don't have a system in place to support. So absolutely, and I appreciate the question, Matthew. Shows that you're very aware of what's happening and, and needs to happen too. Thank you.
I think Maya has her hand up. Maya, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm sorry, I've had my video off. I'm trying to cook dinner for a hungry household here. I just wanted to jump on and say the, all the folks that are talking about Laurel supporting parents and supporting the community. I haven't known Laurel long, but if you look at my text records, in the very short time I have gotten to know her, my interactions with Laurel like far surpass anybody except for the people I share a last name and address with. When we have events or we have interviews, even if it's not Laurel's day, the first person that's texting me, even before the folks that live here that I'm feeding tonight is Laurel. Laurel's the one that's saying, how do you feel? How did that go? What are you thinking? And that to me is a preview of what's to come and makes me really excited. I feel like I've landed alongside Tom, who is right there in those text threads. I have a puppy, sorry. I feel like I've landed people that no matter what happens, I have, I have new partners in the community and I'm really thankful for that. It doesn't hurt that Laurel looks exactly like my lifelong best friend. So when I, when I look at her, I'm like, oh. But, but I think that that would have happened anyway because she's warm, she's welcoming, she's receptive, she listens and, and she's like a fast learner. There's a lot of things that she didn't know. And because campaigning is like a beast and really nobody knows a lot of these details. And, and, and I'm just like floored and impressed by how quickly she's jumped in and said like, yeah, I got this. I don't, I don't need experts, I'll be the expert. So you know, I, I just want to just emphasize how much I appreciate having Laurel in my life, let alone as a future board member.
It goes both ways.
Thank you Maya. Well, we're, we're beyond time. I'm not seeing any other hands. Want to respect folks having to go cook for their families and do other things. Thank you to our whole lineup. Sabrina, Eliana, Linda, Kitty, Lori, Jora and all of you that came tonight to show your love and support. It's much appreciated. And after the event, if you want to figure out a way to support the campaign or donate or get a yard sign, please go to the website. We make it as easy as possible for you to plug in there. And once again, thanks again, much appreciated.
Okay, may I just offer a final suggestion? Can we all just, if you're feeling it, can we all just come off mute? You can sign off right if there's come off mute and allow yourself to actually make some noise so we can all hear each other. We've all been in community together throughout this event, but we've been in silent partnership. Let's make some noise, let's hear each other. Kicking it up.
Go Laurel, go Laurel.
Laurel, Tom and Maya.
Thank you everybody.
Good night.